Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council's legislative agenda. Start with...is there...thank you. Start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever change the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. I will now ask the Girl Scouts to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Give me a round of applause.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks to Council President Wilkerson. We got tag-alongs coming right your way right now. So, we'll do special delivery. I'll just...if it's okay, if I can just say a couple words here. I'll tell you what, that was awesome. I'll tell you, there's not a lot of city councils that get to have that kind of Pledge of Allegiance. So, great job, Girl Scouts. I am so proud of you. We actually are at three city councils tonight. Seven o'clock, I'll be virtual down with Pasco. And then we're meeting with four, actually. Ellensburg is going on right as we speak. And I was just at the Airway Heights one here at 5:30. So, what we're doing out there is we're celebrating Day of the Girls. So, city council on Friday is on...October 11th is the 12th anniversary of the Day of the Girl. And that was put in place 12 years ago to celebrate the 1 billion girls across our globe and to let them know that they have a voice. And so, girls, you have a voice. And tonight, this incredible council, which is our home base, because our headquarters is but a mile from here, let you come on here to let your voice be heard. So, thank you, city council, for all that you do. We had a great year. We finished up our fiscal year here about a week ago. We finished up at 4,300 girls, which is most we've had since 2013. So, just an incredible, incredible group out there doing great things out here. You probably know, membership organizations are under decline, but not your Girl Scouts. We're on our way to 5,000 girls, and you're making that happen. And the best news of all tonight is our cookie sales next year are going to be $5 a box. And we have not raised prices since 2016.
I was clapping because I buy a lot of cookies.
I know, I know. And we donate a lot of cookies. Thirty-nine thousand boxes donated to our military. We just sent cookies out to a U.S. submarine out in Bremerton out here. We've never sent cookies to a submarine before. So, I hope it's well-used out there. Thank you, city council, for being our home base. Thank you for making a difference for these girls and honoring them in what you do. We're kind of the Gonzaga council. Apologies to any Cougs out there, but we're top-10 in membership out of 110 councils out there this year. Your Girl Scouts are making the world a better place, and it's with your support. Have a great night. Thank you for honoring Day of the Girls.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, I get to brag because they know tag-alongs are my favorite. Enough tag-alongs can get them before council anytime they want, so, thank you. Yeah, I got it. Tonight, we are going to have poetry at the podium, and we're going to invite up Alexander Manzoni.
This is a reading from the Spokane Writes a Poetry and Prose Anthology. The Down and Out Spokane Library Patron Celebration. I sat at the downtown Spokane Library about three years ago, fresh and dirty from an all-around, train-bound, east-coast-out-of-state exodus. Disheveled, burnt out, and broken. Homeless, disillusioned, and living on the streets, the mission at the House of Charity, no longer does that describe me. Now I celebrate life, the life of mine, and the lives of those who didn't make it as far as I. OD'd, dead, in pain, or otherwise. Still, though, almost every day I wake up and cry and reflect upon the events that brought me here, and though it is all clear, it still never seems to be. Clouded, surrounded by devils and ghosts and the forever memories of that which was, I celebrate life and cannot die just because. I live on. I try to be strong. It's not easy, no, nothing ever is. Don't forget to say goodnight to the kids, and don't forget either the time that was spent reading Kerouac, half-drunk or fully stoned, writing poetry on those free-to-the-public library computers, typing away madly, endlessly, until the hour was up and it was time to return to the shelter for lunch, because otherwise there wouldn't be lunch left to be had. I typed madly, endlessly, with so many hunched over and sleeping around me, while others were wild with their amphetamine ways. Tweaking, freaking, streaking, and creaking on and on and on until I myself thought I was losing my mind right along with them. And maybe I did, a few times, but I always recovered. Now, I'm free. I have a place, and I'm reasonably sober. But day to day, I still see those around me, those from times best forgotten. I still see them, many, though I know not their names, and when they ask me for a dollar, I give so, almost happily. Even though they don't recognize me, I recognize them by their faces, and I still do. One must remain true to the self and to everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingo, are you ready? Okay. We'll have a proclamation by Councilmember Bingo.
Yes. They were unable to come accept tonight, but they would like it to be...
All right. Whereas, many parents and families across the United States are devastated each year by the loss of their child to stillbirth, miscarriage, SIDS, or any other cause at any point during pregnancy or infancy. And whereas, in 1988, United States President Ronald Reagan declared October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month to recognize the unique grief of bereaved parents in an effort to demonstrate support to the many families who have suffered such a tragic loss. And whereas, promoting awareness of pregnancy and infant loss not only increases the likelihood that grieving families will receive understanding and support, but also results in improved education and prevention efforts, which may ultimately reduce the incidence of these tragedies. Now, therefore, I, Lisa Brown, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the people of Spokane, to hereby proclaim October 2024 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in Spokane and in remembrance of Colton D. Langen, encourage parents, caregivers, and all residents to become educated and opportunities to prevent pregnancy and infancy, infant loss, and support bereaved families when prevention is not possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingo. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingo.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We have several comments on consent agenda. We'll start with John Alder, and then Will Hewings.
Excuse me, Council President Wilkerson. Did you want to do the appointments first?
Oh, thank you.
Would you like me to read them?
Yes.
Okay. Appointment of Rhonda Young to the Transportation Commission as an at-large member with transportation expertise for a term of October 7, 2024, to October 7, 2027. Appointment of Mike Bordall to the Transportation Commission as an at-large member with transportation expertise for a term of October 7, 2024, to October 7, 2027. Appointment of Rachel Calery to the Transportation Commission as an at-large member with expertise of the Americans with Disability Act for a term of October 7, 2024, to October 7, 2027. Appointment of Joanie Harris to the Transportation Commission as the Council District 1 member for a term of October 7, 2024, to October 7, 2026. Appointment of Casey Jackman to the Transportation Commission as the Council District 3 member for a term of October 7, 2024, to October 7, 2026. Appointment of Dylan Julette as the member of the City Parking System Expertise to the Transportation Commission for a term of October 7, 2024, to October 7, 2025. And appointment of Grant Shipley to the Transportation Commission as the Council District 2 member for a term of October 7, 2024, to October 7, 2025.
All of them, favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nose?
No.
No.
Those are approved. Thank you, Ms. Fister. Now to public comment for the consent agenda, and I'll still start with John Alder. I thought I saw...oh, there he is. And then Will Hewings after that.
John Alder, I live in North Spokane. I just want to comment on the domestic violence one 2024, 8054. As a past victim of child abuse, and also I just know how much trouble there is with domestic violent abuse, I'm glad to see money is going to help with that. And just remind everybody, YWCA has got a DV 101 and 201 this month that people could check up on and learn more about this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Will?
My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown Spokane. I strongly oppose OPR 2024-0106, the amendment of the contract with Zach Pekelis of Pacific Law Group, Seattle, Washington, which would increase the contract by $50,000 for a total of $100,000 to defend against the lawsuit brought by Sean Foote. This lawsuit challenges a 2023 resolution by the Spokane City Council that censured former mayor Nadine Woodward and allegedly violated Sean Foote's constitutional rights, including his First Amendment rights to free speech and religious practice. The First Amendment to the United States Constitution is a cornerstone of American democracy, safeguarding fundamental rights like freedom of speech and the free exercise of religion. It ensures that government cannot suppress or punish individuals for their beliefs or religious practices. Religious freedom is one of the principles that this nation was founded upon, something that I also served my country honorably and fought for, so you guys could sit up here and govern. But I find it, and I'm getting off track, but as Sean Foote points out, he has the right to gather, worship, and pray without being attacked or maligned by his own government. The actions of the Spokane City Council in passing a resolution that condemned his religious event is not just a violation of his constitutional rights, it represents a broader attack on religious freedoms in our community. So, you guys remember, you were a part of it, Council President, in 2020, when you created the noise ordinance with Councilwoman Kinnear. Yeah, you created a noise ordinance to silence Christians once again. Same thing you guys did. You condemned, you should be ashamed. I'm a Christian, and I'm sick of it. But anyways, thank you.
Next is Terry Hill, and then Justin Holler. Terry's going to pass. Is Justin in the audience? Here he comes. The consent agenda, yes, Justin.
Should have brought my notes today. Justin Holler, District 1. Sorry, I wrote here, I'm a little winded still. About 0852 Drug Court, why aren't we going after the drug dealers instead of the end result, which is the drug usage? It'd be nice to go after the drug dealers, considering how many hundreds of thousands of dollars we spend on Narcan. You know, maybe we could concentrate on that, given the fact that the police chief makes over $200,000 a year. The guy should be Batman for that price, in my opinion. He should be catching mofo's left and right. I don't understand how you can have a police chief that isn't as tough on crime as someone in Florida who basically dares criminals to step up and step to them. You know, for that price, we should have a tough police chief, and it'd be nice for the five of you, mostly the five of you, four and a half, we'll say, who allow crime to happen and allow criminal behavior to go unpunished largely. And it's frustrating, and it creates low morale for the police officers when the criminals that they catch, the drug addicts, who are stealing money, are stealing things for their drug money, they get let out before the shift is over. You know, imagine the low morale you would have as a police officer catching criminals when all the criminals would be just let go before your shift is over. You wouldn't want to do your job. You know, so maybe instead of allocating money to Drug Court, allocate money to catching the criminals, catching the drug dealers, and actually incarcerating them and keeping them in jail, because we got people with multiple felonies, you know, a dozen, you know, two dozen, three dozen, four dozen felonies that are running around the streets. How is that possible if you guys believe that you're hard on crime? It's not. And same thing with 0856...56...yeah, 0856, $900,000. $900,000, $982,000 for Drug Court. How about we hold the parents accountable and we stop locking up the fathers, which has been proven that fatherless households create more criminals? Unless, of course, you want more criminals so you can profit off of crime.
Thank you, Justin. Council, as of last week, we're going to take on the consent agenda under one, we're going to take A, B, and C individually. Councilmember Bingo, commentary?
Can I switch that to just A instead of A, B, and C?
Okay. Okay, so then we are now going to vote on just A, which is the Community Court. Any other council commentary on that? All those in favor of Community Court, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noses?
No.
Okay, that passes. And you are okay without taking B and C separately? Okay, on the rest of the consent agenda, all those in favor, or any council commentary on the rest of consent agenda, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noses? Abstentions? That passes. Ms. Fister.
Ordinance amending ordinance number C 364627, passed by the City Council November 27, 2023, and entitled an ordinance adopting the under-budget of the City of Spokane for 2024, making appropriations to the various funds of the City of Spokane Government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in. Ordinance C 36583, miscellaneous grants fund, number one, increase revenue by $982,000. A of the increased revenue, $982,000 is provided by the Office of Justice Programs for the Drug Court and Community Court and Municipal Court Department. Number two, increase appropriation by $982,000. A of the increased appropriation, $860,000 is provided solely for professional services. B of the increased appropriation, $55,800 is provided solely for travel. C of the increased appropriation, $40,000 is provided solely for security services. D of the increased appropriation, $26,200 is provided solely for transportation services. This action arises from the need to accept the Office of Justice Programs Drug Court and Community Court Expansion Grant.
We have two public comments. First is Chess Johnson. And after Chess, Justin Holler. Welcome.
I just signed up to talk about the Drug Court, and I think you've already gone through that, haven't you?
That was in the consent agenda, this is actually accepting the monies for it.
But this is still on...
But you can still speak to it if you like.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, regards to it, I think you should make sure they keep funding the Drug Court. The alternative of jail and prison doesn't work. I've been to this jail. I've been tortured in this jail. I've been assaulted in the jail. I've been denied medical care in the jail. I've been denied showers, phone calls, soap, toilet paper, slept naked on concrete floors that haven't been cleaned since probably that jail opened up. So, I assure you, if you don't want to do Drug Court, that's the alternative, and it's a much worse aspect of everything that's going on at that facility over there. So, definitely keep the Drug Court going. Keeps people out of there, out of that facility, out of the crimes being committed there, so at least they can get some therapeutic care to try to take care of their addiction problem. So, definitely keep it going.
Thank you. Justin?
It's still Justin Holler, District 1. Apparently, I already pretty much talked about 583, about the $982,000 for Drug Court. It just...it still baffles me that you can sell the amount of drugs being sold downtown and no one gets caught. How is that possible? I guarantee you, if they were in your neighborhood and waking you up at all hours of the day and night, you'd figure out real quick how many drugs are being sold. You know, there's a plethora of drugs being sold downtown, and Will has spoken to this. I firsthand saw it for seven years, living downtown, and someone's looking the other way. You know, you just...you can't...you can't do the amount of business being done. I mean, Magic, look at the Girl Scout cookies. If there was a Girl Scout...if there were five Girl Scout cookie sellers on every street corner downtown, at every Rob McCann Low Income building, you'd be like, whoa, that's a lot of Girl Scout cookies. Huh, we got to look into that. But because it's not Girl Scout cookies, you're not looking into it. Something's wrong. At Pacific Estate, at Second Division, name your place downtown, and it's just, I don't know why you can't nip it in the bud, go after the drug dealers. You know, maybe get them coming...you know, how many mules are coming in at the bus stop, at the bus depot, Greyhound bus? You know, how many people are coming in selling drugs? Because they're not coming in from the ether. People aren't making fentanyl here. It's coming across some other place. So, I just...it's astounding that you can't seem to get a grasp on that and go after the root cause is the drug dealers. Now, granted, it's easy to sell drugs because they pretty much sell themselves, kind of like Girl Scout cookies. You know, nobody had to twist somebody's arm, go, you know what, oh, you want some heroin? Yeah, of course I want some heroin. I want to mellow out. You want some speed? Yeah, of course I want to steal some copper and be up all night. Woo-hoo! You know, but the root cause, go after the root cause, you know? And nobody who is homeless, stealing for drug money, seems to be getting caught. And if I can figure out that the hood is open means that the new batch of meth is ready for sale, and that people who are over 20 riding little BMX bikes that hurt my knees to watch their knees go like this above their hip, because it's a bad bike fitment, and if I can figure out that they're riding these little bikes so they can throw them all over the fence because they're stolen, they can get away faster, maybe the police can figure that out, too. You know, it's just, it's not rocket scientists. It's not rocket science.
Thank you, Justin. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Ordinance C 36584, miscellaneous grants fund, number one, increase revenue by $180,000. A of the increased revenue, $180,000 is provided by the Washington Traffic Safety Commission for the DUI Court and the Municipal Court Department. Number two, increase appropriation by $180,000. A of the increased appropriation, $180,000 is provided solely for professional services. This action arises from the need to accept the Washington Traffic Safety Commission DUI Court Grant.
One public comment. Chess Johnson?
Could be the same thing I said before.
All right, pass. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Ordinance C 36585, regarding changes to various funds to make grade and associated pay range changes for various positions for the third quarter of 2024, as more specifically described in the ordinance. This action arises from the need to adjust pay ranges to align with salary analysis.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Emergency ordinance number C 36591, establishing the Community Safety Fund and setting the expiration date of the additional sales and use tax authorized by RCW 82.14.450, adopting section 7.08.160 to chapter 7.08 of the Spokane Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
There's no public comment. Council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Wait a minute.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, this is the Community Safety Fund.
Yes, yes.
I have a lot to say about this. And so, first off, this was something that, you know, I had proposed a resolution about a month ago or so to talk about a sunset, once it was discussed, even though it wasn't in the ballot language, and we suggested it be in the ballot language, and that didn't happen. But then it turns out, okay, the people want a sunset, and so we're going to put a sunset in, which is great. I'm glad that we're here now. But even after that was done, and I pulled my resolution, or I didn't advance it, correction, I didn't advance my resolution in good faith, hoping to be able to be a part of those discussions. The administration and this council did not seem to think that it was important that people like myself be involved in that conversation. And so, what ended up happening is that ordinance was proposed... Um, and so what ended up happening is that ordinance was proposed, uh, you know, late Friday, um, we got to look at it today, and, uh, so we suspended the rules, we put it on the, uh, the agenda, um, I was told that we would be able to consider amendments. And, uh, what ended up happening was, you know, again, in, uh, good faith, I brought forward, uh, an amendment because we basically just got to see the ordinance today. Uh, by the way, happy anniversary to my wife, it was our anniversary on Saturday and so this weekend I was a little preoccupied. Um, but, uh, so, so Monday I get here, I get to see it and, uh, get to propose an amendment, and, uh, what ends up happening is, you know, maybe the language needs to be cleaned up, we're seeing the ordinance for the first time today, maybe it's, seems a little fair to allow us to propose, um, and, uh, and write amendments in a way that is proper. And what ended up happening was, sure Jonathan, you can propose an amendment, but we're not going to let you amend that amendment to get the proper language, uh, because I guess you had a chance this weekend while you were on your, uh, on your anniversary date with your wife to, to take a look at it. It was, again, another step of bad faith, uh, not just by the administration, but actually this time it was from fellow council members who wouldn't even allow me to propose the proper language, uh, to where that in and of itself could be voted down. If you want to vote it down, you can still vote it down. I mean, what is the point of having that, uh, you know, if you, if you don't get to do it? So I'm, I'm incredibly disappointed in this council, uh, one that I, I actually believe has been much better on when it comes to, uh, bringing ordinances forward and, and taking time and making sure we get it right. In this particular instance, it was a bad faith effort, um, disingenuous effort in my opinion, for us to be able to say the things that we needed to say. And, uh, so I'm very frustrated by this, I don't think that the, that the language here, oh, by the way, and what the language said was, if a jail measure is going to be passed by the county, ours automatically repeals, right? Pretty straightforward, nothing crazy about it, just, uh, if we want a jail measure to pass, um, and many in this community do because it is a critical public safety need, if we want a jail measure to pass, we cannot have our point one percent in place and ask the surrounding jurisdictions and the unincorporated county to pay point two percent of their sales towards a jail measure and we only pay point one. That is never, ever, ever going to happen. And ostensibly what that does is it kills a future jail measure. And that's really important to understand, is that if we weren't going to put language in about it in a sunset in the first place, but now we want a sunset, but we also don't want a jail, we don't want to, uh, approve a jail measure, everything here is lining up to say that, again, uh, a jail is not in our future, we don't agree with the jail moving forward, and I'm sure there will be some commentary back on that statement, but I, I have a hard time reading it any other way. Um, I think that this, again, was a disingenuous effort, uh, by this council, I'm frustrated by the, uh, by the lack of professional courtesy, um, in this particular instance, and it really was a shameful day for us as a council. Um, and I hope that we learn from this and we move on, uh, because in the end, what ends up happening is, uh, earlier today, uh, you know, council District One advocated for something else, we were told what's good for us, and, uh, again, uh, here, you know, us trying to bring a, a counter perspective based on the people who voted for us. Um, again, what ended up happening is we are going to be told what is good for us in District One by us not being allowed to do it. And as a matter of fact, just to continue to pile onto this, uh, the question was called on me twice today. The question was called twice. We haven't called the question twice my entire time on council, and he's about to point of order because apparently we can't even get animated anymore, so let me say this. If it pleased the council, I'll continue my comments here, uh, in a much more genuine and, and sincere and soft way, um, which again is incredibly frustrating, that, uh, again, if a member of the minority gets a little animated by an injustice that's been done to us, we can't express that in any way other than positivity and rainbows and butterflies. And so with positivity and rainbows and butterflies, I will yield the podium.
Yeah, I too will try to be very gentle, I don't want to disrupt anything. I, um...
Point of order.
Wow, I'm getting point of order for spring.
Not you, the audience.
Members of the audience.
Thank you.
Counselor McCackhart, continue.
So, so first of all, the, the idea of what is in this ordinance was brought forward by the administration about three or four weeks ago. So there's been a lot of time that something, and this is not very elaborate, it's extremely simple, that this could have come forward rather than sort of the dark of night, uh, Thursday afternoon, late Thursday, uh, sort of a situation. And frankly, the only reason that my amendment is even in this packet is because I kind of had a good sense, this is exactly what was going to go down. It's not hard to, to know, I, I mean ballots are coming out Thursday, this had to be approved now, and in fact, I'm guessing there's going to be a big press release that comes out to try to get a big headline, uh, tomorrow or Wednesday right before those ballots drop. And it's just unfortunate because it's also, I believe, dishonest. Um, I don't think that this is actually going to be portrayed accurately, there's going to be commentary that we've, that we're protecting these dollars, even though there's absolutely no definition provided of what community safety is, that will be up to the whims of any future council and any future mayor, which has been the argument all along, that this whole, uh, ordinance was supposed to be overcoming. Um, and instead, there's just been blanket opposition to the idea of putting in some specificity in this that protects the taxpayers. As it stands, I mean, we argued hard for specificity to be put in the resolution itself that is going to the ballot, we asked for a sunset clause to be put in, it was just flat ignored. And then suddenly, we see a newspaper article where the mayor is quoted saying, wow, we just realized this is what the community wants. Go figure, maybe try listening sometimes to some of the council members up here, particularly those from District One, who are completely shut down and disallowed from even true participation half the time. This is incredibly infuriating, and, you know, Councilor Bingle talked about some other issues that came up today, and of course it, you know, there's a whole lot of things, you know, STA is a great example of, of an area where we're told, you know, we know better than you, we can represent you, but it's just not appropriate. Okay? We have constituents who have concerns, we have constituents who have a pretty good sense of what the greater community actually wants, and just having the opportunity for folks to have ears to listen and not just shut us down because of the geographic location we come from or because of, uh, a political bent that might be a little different than yours is just, it's foolish. But at the end of the day, the whole intent behind this ordinance is to try to convince the voters that there are protections and the dollars will get spent as we've told you they will. But if that's the case, why was every effort to put that in the resolution opposed? If that was the case, why is every effort to put this even into a code that four council members the week after the election could repeal even? I mean, why, why even oppose that unless there's a lack of commitment to truly follow through with, with what we've said? Even the jail measure, I have been in meetings, the mayor has directly specifically said that she is advocating that this be repealed if in fact there is a jail measure that goes to the ballot because of the one-tenth being necessary. So why are we not committing to that? Why are we just putting that into the ether as a nugget, but we're not committing to it in code? We're not committing to it anywhere. And that's my frustration here, is that I believe this is just going to sort of mislead voters into thinking something that's not. And it's really unfortunate because again, we don't, I, we could have really considered some thoughtful, uh, I think, improvements to this, even though we're well after the fact and it's now sort of a code provision that can be repealed, but there's some thoughtful stuff that we could have done, but we're rushing this to a vote, which we always do, we're, you know, ignoring, uh, the ideas that are coming from a certain district. This is just not right, and I'm sure we're going to hear that, you know, we're out of order and we're saying things we shouldn't, and that's fine, I mean, we get shut down every single time. But at the end of the day, we have a lot more, I believe, a lot more constituents who are at risk and vulnerable and need that public safety support more than anybody else. And even despite their fiscal challenges, I believe they would vote for something like this if we were committing to them that we're going to spend the money in the exact appropriate way, that we are being specific about how we're going to spend the money, that we're truly committing to these things. And I think frankly, when they see the hesitancy and reluctance of this council and, and, uh, the administration, wh- what sort of trust are they going to have that we're going to follow through? And if they do happen to vote for the measure and it passes and things aren't exactly spent the way they expected because of the messaging that has been accompanying this, what is that going to do for trust in future measures that we might desperately need? Okay, one just very good example, we've got a park levy that praying is going to still be on our ballot next year, and that is something that over, we have one of the, we have an incredible plan, we've had overwhelming support for, I sat up here and held up the plan one day because I am just, I'm so excited about what that will bring. But if the voters don't think they can trust us, they're not going to support that, and they're probably not going to support a lot of other things either. So I, I just think this is a basic good governance and really a good neighbor, uh, with regards to the jail type of an issue, and the fact that we can't just sort of make some commitments like that, it's concerning.
Thank you, Councilor McGinnell.
Yeah, thank you, and, um, just want to, I guess, kind of name, yeah, the, you know, frustrations, um, that you've all pointed out. I think that, um, this has come late, I wish we'd been here, uh, earlier, much earlier. Um, and here we are, um, with respect to the jail, you know, I, uh, would love to just kind of learn more what exactly kind of the future plans are. Um, you know, we've, we've heard that kind of TBD, um, we know that there's been, uh, a visit to Watcom to look at, you know, what happened with their, uh, bond that had, uh, failed about three times, and then they got a measure passed that I think really shifted the way they did a lot of capital improvements and looked at, uh, behavioral health, Community Court, a lot of the different things, um, that we're, we're looking at. Um, with this ordinance though, what this does is really segregates a, uh, Community Safety Fund, which I think does, um, really counteract some of the, uh, kind of blank check arguments, uh, that we've, we've seen in a lot of the feedback that we've, we've gotten. Um, you know, we, um, hold the, the, the purse so to speak, and so, um, you know, that accountability really is, is upon us. Um, I'd definitely like to see some, you know, stronger language, but in the whereas is, it's very clear, uh, that it says this funding will go to the, uh, Spokane Police Department, the Spokane Fire Department, Office of the Police Ombuds, and Municipal Court, uh, as well as the sunset clause provision, uh, ending in twenty thirty-five. Um, that's what's before us today. Um, trust is definitely a, a two-way, two-way street, and we have, I think, um, some, some definite ground, uh, to, to gain, um, but I'm, I'm hopeful that, um, as voters are making an informed decision, uh, they, they look at this and, and know that we did take their feedback seriously, and I think by alone putting this in its own, uh, fund will help bring, I think, a lot of more, a lot more protection, um, around how the future funds will be spent.
Any other counsel commentary? I will say, um, thank you to my council members, we did quite, we had quite a robust discussion today around this, and time was, time was made under the rules to allow amendments to go forward. And to Councilor McCackhart, there's many people in District Two, which are low-income, who will benefit from this as well, so it's not just Hilliard, I think it's across the entire city. It's disappointing, sometimes the language we use, I feel we are pitting districts against other districts as who gets more, who gets what, who doesn't, representation, all that, it is an entire city. This money will be used citywide. I trust our police department, our fire department will, uh, deploy these funds equitably. If not, we will hear from our citizens that they're not being deployed equably, uh, as put forth in this. So as we go forward, and yes, we are the body, these funds will have to come to council for approval, so they will have to explain the need for them, and so I think that is another layer of accountability and another layer of opportunity for trust to be built, uh, for all the ones who absolutely say there is no trust going forward. Councilor Bingle?
Yeah.
And Councilor Klitschke?
I will say we were really close to having a robust discussion on this, uh, the problem is, is what calling the question means, is that there is no more discussion, and twice that was called on me by Councilmember Zepone, okay? If you're looking for robust discussion, especially in a time where we were not given a time to discuss it except for this, uh, this was the time to have the robust discussion. And what ended up happening was the voices of District One, one hundred percent were silenced today by the actions Councilmember Zepone took by deciding to consciously make a decision to call the question despite the fact that this is the only time that we got to discuss this particular measure in private or in public. This was the only chance that we were given today to discuss this. And so to say that there was quite a robust discussion, kind of true, mostly not true, and mostly, uh, frustrating because again, voices like mine were silenced today because people didn't want to hear what I had to say, and not people, well, no, it was people because it required a vote. Five members of this council, twice, voted to stop the discussion on this matter. And so when you say there was a robust discussion, not really true, because what they decided was that what we had to say wasn't as important as anybody else, and it was time to move on.
Councilor Klitschke?
Parliamentary procedure was laboriously used during our discussion, and I think it is good practice to call the question when the arguments start repeating, because then it gets cyclical and spends a lot of time saying the same things over and over again. But one thing I did want to clarify about this, um, tax is that it's not going to, it's not a foregone conclusion that it would stop a two percent jail tax. The county did come up with a proposal that made sense, that needed the whole two percent for a jail tax, we could repeal this tax. There's no tying of our hands, and there's no real reason that we have to tie our hands before that even happens. This gives us the best opportunity to negotiate with the county about what a new jail proposal looks like. It's something that the whole county pays for, and it is something that the city pays a lot of money to use, so we should have and retain that ability to negotiate that. So that is why Councilmember Bingle's proposal failed, and not because we didn't give him the opportunity to change it, we actually did discuss that, he actually did discuss his amendment. So I will be voting for this.
Counselor McCackhart?
Yeah, just really quick, I also want to speak to that the ballot measure has clear items in it and dollar amounts on the website that you can go and see, and very specifically it calls for relaunching neighborhood resource officers, reconstituting a robust traffic unit, replacing the fire department's outdated fleet, fired, uh, station improvements, uh, re-inseating the fire academy, which will save us dollars on, um, overtime, sustaining evidence-based therapeutic courts, increasing staffing at the police ombuds office, so it is very clear what people are voting for. And, um, yes, I'm agreeing with how Councilmember Klitschke said, we had plenty of time, we talked for probably forty-five minutes to an hour today about this item and discussed and debated the amendments, and there was no, um, no opportunity not to discuss those amendments. In fact, I allowed Councilmember Bingle to make his motion first so that it was following through with our commitment to allow the discussion to be had.
Councilor McCackhart?
Yeah, I would just point out, uh, those numbers are only a commitment for two years. This council has not voted to actually, uh, implement those numbers, they're just pie in the sky, they're, those are not official policy right now, and frankly, I don't think they can be committed to. Four point five million dollars for police, unless your plan is to supplant, there is no way they are going to hire enough personnel to cover four point five million in two years. There's just no possible way. We're even told, best case scenario, and this has been confirmed to me over and over again, is eight will make it through the academy, and then we might get a couple of laterals. And that's going to take an entire year plus to get them actually put in place. So where are these NROs coming from? We have yet to have a plan presented to us, we've yet to have even a conversation about it. Uh, this is nothing more than numbers on a piece of paper that had been uploaded to the website, and we're told that this is how the money's going to be spent. Show me the plan, show me where we are going to find those individuals. So it's all well and good that we're putting some numbers out there, that's great, it's going to make it really, really hard for us to change those numbers in these two years. But what's going to happen the two years after that, the two years after that, the two years after that, and the two years after that? We have no idea. And to the point of these things are in the resolution, yeah, but it also is couched very carefully, and I pulled this out when we voted on this, it's couched very carefully as such as these items, which means that there are other things that can be spent that we're not defining, that is up for interpretation. So the point is, there is no- So the point is, there is no solid plan around these dollars. They can say they're going to spend $4.5 million. My guess is what the real plan there is, is to supplant the $1.8 million that's coming out of traffic calming. So we're not going to get new and enhanced service. It will be the existing service. And then we might be able to get a few more bodies, hopefully, I pray, because we really need to recruit fast and hard, but we might be able to get a few more bodies and maybe we can get a couple NROs. But the reality is, I'm told that we still don't have enough on patrol. And so to start putting folks out in these other positions is going to be challenging. But again, we haven't had a presentation on this. You know, when we had the reorganization of PD here about two years ago, you know, we had a, a presentate, multiple presentations from Chief Mydl and then Assistant Chief Lundgren and a lot of conversation around it. And so we've yet to have that. So we don't really understand what and how this will work or even if the numbers are real. And so again, I, it's great that we have those for two years. Perhaps there is this sort of guardrail, but it, it remains to be seen how that's going to be followed through.
Well, I'll just end with, you know, we all have our opinion and interpretation of these numbers, how Councilmember McCaffrey thinks they will be deployed. It's his perspective currently. He's right, it's not in black and white. We've all heard something. But at this point, we know we need to move forward. So prepare to vote.
Resolution 2024-92 approving the partnership, excuse me, between the City of Spokane and Gonzaga University to apply for a Department of Ecology Air Quality grant.
There is no public comment? Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Ordinance C 36580 relating to noise control, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 10.70.120 to Chapter 10.70 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date.
We have one public comment, Justin Holler.
Why is it that we can't get any help with District One? It seems like everywhere else gets help, but District One doesn't get help when it comes to anything, except for a particular business that makes over $15 million a year, according to their 22 tax reports on Indiana. And they can, they can get people to, to help them when there's a protest across the street about noise ordinance, but when there's street racing and people with their subwoofers rattling buildings, no, 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 no. Because your average constituent doesn't make $15 million a year, but this particular business on Indiana makes copious amounts of money, up, up from $500,000 in 2016, by the way. So they make 30 times more from 2016 to 2022 and they have particular undue influence, yet you complain about Chief Mydl talking to a business owner downtown, Chud Wendell, and you get all up in arms about someone who was a conservative, who had, who has had a, I think it was the, the wife that was running for a position in government. So you'll, you'll shut down your political opponents and their husbands, but you won't shut down anything else. It's astounding how one-sided things are and how glaringly apparent it is that you are definitely biased, which is just despicable. And, and you, you shut down one thing, but you don't shut down anything else. And it's just, it's just, it's glaringly obvious to anyone who's paying attention. So may, maybe District One can, can get some representation from the five that vote against everything. You know, it's just horrible to see that it's five to two on just about everything. And history will show that every city that's run a certain way by a certain demographic, by a certain ideology, has failed miserably, miserably. So if you look at Chicago, New York, LA, Boston, San Francisco, Minneapolis, these are all failed business models, yet you're, you're willing to go with the okie dokie on so many things and it's five to two. It's just horrible to see. You know, maybe pay attention to other noises in other areas that you maybe don't necessarily know about and open your mind to other things that are happening in the city versus your own little microcosm.
Thank you, Justice. Any other council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36581 relating to the use of composted materials in City of Spokane projects adopting a new section 7.06.221 to Chapter 7.06 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
There is no public comment? Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Ordinance C 36582 relating to commercial truck traffic on Nebraska Avenue and amending Section 12.08.010 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
There is no public com, no public comment? Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
I just, one question on this. Did we ever figure out on that, the local deliveries to the school, if those trucks were going to be able to go in?
The, the trucks will be able to go in. It's that they've been going out and cutting across the entire street to Division.
Okay, so if they're not coming in on Nebraska, where are they going to be coming in on?
No, they can go to access it. It's local delivery.
Okay.
It's the cut through, that's the issue.
Okay.
I just speak to this and I, counsel, I think you all received the written testimony from the neighbors. Our neighbor there that raised this to our attention or my attention on council, unfortunately she was busy with a commitment tonight and couldn't come and speak. But this was really just an issue that was raised by constituents of trying to resolve an issue with some neighbors and businesses. And I helped communicate that and we worked together with those local businesses. And unfortunately, the temporary solution only lasted about a month before the truck started going down the route. And there is a designated truck route that is very close to there, a block away. They just have to go back to the street and go down one of the arterials to do their deliveries and instead they've been doing shortcuts. And so hopefully this will be able to resolve the issue that the neighbors have all collectively worked together, petitioned and asked for this change. So happy to be supporting this change for them. And they said they're looking forward to having a block party when this is over.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
First reading ordinances, Ordinance C 36576 streamlining rental registration requirements, amending Sections 10.57.020 and 10.57.040 of the Spokane Municipal Code, deferred from September 23, 2024, advanced agenda during the September 16, 2024, 3:30 PM briefing session. Ordinance C 36586 relating to the annual rates for the sewer utility and services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.03.1004, .1008, .1010, .1011, .1012, .1018, .1010, .1014, point 2015, point 2016, point 2161 and point 2025 to Chapter 13.04 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance C 36587 relating to the annual rates for the water utility and services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.04, .2002, .2004, .2005, .2008, .2010, .2012, .2014, point 2015, point 2016, point 2161 and point 2025 to Chapter 13.04 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance C 36588 relating to the annual rates for the water, wastewater, public utilities and services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.035.500 to Chapter 13.035 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance C 36589 relating to the rates of solid waste collection, public utilities and services, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 13.02.0106, .0112, .0114, .0125, .0130, .0202, .0204, .0224, .0232, .0230, excuse me, .0238, .0244, .0300, .0304, .0306, .0310, .0314,
This shows that many housing providers are simply unaware of the registry and are unable to navigate it. Penalizing them without addressing this lack of outreach will drive housing providers, especially your small mom and pops, out of the market completely. We should focus on education and support, not punishment. Overwhelmingly, this ordinance presents serious safety and liability concerns. It prevents housing providers from evicting tenants involved in illegal activities if they aren't registered. This was made clear in the Brady versus Whitewater Creek case where delays in addressing known safety risks had severe consequences. Most importantly, this ordinance will delay addressing domestic violence. Under RCW 5918-585, housing providers are required to remove abusers following a court order. Administrative delays caused by registration requirements would put victims at even greater risk. I ask that the council seriously reconsider the far-reaching consequences of this ordinance, focus on solutions that truly protect both tenants and housing providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Justice Forall?
Go ahead, Justice, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Justice Forall, a City-spoken resident. I wanted to say that we need to pass the landlord, or we need to make sure that all the landlords are registered with this ordinance, because if they're not, then all of these things that all these people are talking about as negatives for this ordinance will continue to happen. We need to make sure that we have some kind of accountability and tracking and data for all the landlords. If we don't have that, you know, which was asked for for a long time, then we can't find out where these problems keep occurring and stop it. That may be like bad landlords or all the other things that were mentioned tonight. This ordinance, I apologize, I was not prepared, I didn't know. Let me get to my speech, one second. This measure is essentially for creating stability for renters who often face unpredictable increases in their housing costs and their housing situations. By ensuring that only registered landlords can make these changes, we protect tenants from potential exploitation and offer them a sense of security in their homes. For landlords, this ordinance creates a level playing field. By requiring registration, encourage responsible property management and compliance with safety standards. Additionally, this ordinance streamlines the registration process by automatically exempting qualifying properties from registration fees. This encourages more landlords to register their units, increasing compliance and helping to ensure that a large percentage of rental properties meet safe and quality standards. All of these things are like, to make sure landlords are comfortable with what's going on and that they can meet, you know, basic bare minimums of getting registered. So this is very important. Make sure this passes next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dave Bilsland, and after him, Gretchen McDevitt.
Somebody dropped a pen. I'm in full support of this, but I think what also should be included is a way to find the landlords that haven't done the deed. How do we find them? I have an answer. Spokane County Scout. I have looked up so many addresses on Spokane County Scout that it's not funny. I've looked up my landlords, found out where they lived, for example, because I found it on Spokane County Scout by looking at the apartment building I live in. It's that easy to do. Sit me down with code enforcement and their list of people who have already done it so I can eliminate it, I can go property by property by property and find out who owns it. I can figure out which ones are mom and pops and which ones aren't. It's not that difficult. A little bit of Googling on the name of the property owner. It's that simple. It's not rocket science. These people need to be found so they can come within the law. That's why we have the law, is so that everybody has to follow the same law. Well, a lot of these folks, from what I understand, are just mom and pops that aren't even on the internet. Well, you know what? Once I identify them, I can send somebody to their door and say, hey, you need some help. We're here to help. That's how to fix this. Yes, we need this ordinance as a motivator because those mom and pops can't evict and they can't raise the rent. Well, I happen to know that my landlord has done it because they're raising my rent another hundred dollars. So now my rent is twice what it was when I moved in. But back to this issue, I think we can find them and I think it's our community responsibility to help them. A lot of these folks are elderly folks, and like I said, they're not on the internet. You know our grandparents, right? Let's help the grandparents out there that don't know how to help themselves. A lot of them are just getting a little extra income off this rental, and it's enough to make a difference. And if they can't keep it up, it might cost them too much. We should also have a way to get them supplies to help fix things. There's some of us that are pretty handy and we can fix these things, okay? Let's help our fellow citizens that would be affected by this ordinance. Let's get the places fixed.
Thank you, Dave. Gretchen?
Well, I'm not sure how it got mixed up, but I'm here to testify on the first reading of C 36591 that we had quite a discussion on that's already been voted on. This ordinance that is supposed to increase public safety is like putting a Band-Aid on a life-threatening wound that just keeps bleeding. Even worse, it really is a blank check, since it is not in the measure itself that we get to vote on, but it's in an ordinance that the council can change any time. What is needed is a comprehensive plan that includes enforcement of our laws, treatment for addiction and mental health problems, enforced expectation for those who remain on our streets, and holding them accountable for their behaviors that are harmful to them and others, and at times devastating to our community, especially the businesses downtown. I've never been a business owner. I want a shop downtown, I still do, but it's getting so, some people aren't. Seventy-five percent of the voters supported the previous Prop 1 to restrict camping and hopefully publicly, public drug use. That is not being enforced. The city, the police chief says it is, but we certainly don't see it. You all receive emails probably from Sheldon Jackson, letting me illustrate my concerns and end my comments by reading part of an email that you should have received by a business owner but may have missed. When we first moved to Spokane, we were struck by its unique character, beauty, and opportunities. We chose to settle here because we thought it offered support for businesses and, most importantly, the ability to raise our children with our core values: hard work, service, strong ethics, and compassion. Though we are extremely proud of what we built, we have sadly realized that it's unsafe for our teenage and older children to do something as simple as clean the outside windows of our business without my husband standing guard. We work hard, starting at 4:30 a.m. and ending at 8:30, seven days a week. We can't roll the garbage out back because of the excessive drug use right behind our business. Now our business is done well despite this, but how long will this continue? In the last week, multiple clients told us they would not be renewing their memberships because of the state of downtown. These clients desire our services is evident in the request for us to come and teach them in their homes and places of business. We welcome hard work and long hours, but the issues we are facing are out of control, but simply they are wearing us down. To our public officials, we may be just another annoying email to skim through, or we may appear as small business owners who complain and are better ignored. How many of us does it take for you to enforce initiatives that will improve downtown before we all leave a city that could be truly amazing?
Thank you, Gretchen.
Please give them help.
That concludes our legislative agenda. We'll now, Councilmember Kacart?
Yeah, could I just request next week at our briefing, could we just have Louise come and talk about a few of the things that we've heard, just what the process has been for getting the word out on this, and, you know, some of the issues with habitability and whatnot?
Absolutely. We'll do that. Thank you. This concludes our legislative agenda. We'll now go into open forum. You have two minutes to speak. Please address all your comments to me. And we'll start open forum with Janelle Simpson, and then Cherry Hill. Welcome.
Hello and thank you. My name is Janelle Simpson, and I'm a current resident of Spokane. As a citizen, I'm concerned with the growing homelessness, drug addiction, and mental health issues that are plaguing our city. We all know the past efforts have failed for various reasons. I have discovered an organization out of Portland, Oregon that has seen some provable success. Central City Concerns model has been in effect for over forty-five successful years. They currently offer help in Portland to over fifteen thousand people a year, per year, who are turning to them for compassionate support to help them become self-sufficient and productive citizens, which is what we all want, I hope. The factors that contribute to homelessness and mental health issues as well as drug addiction are very complex. This approach addresses all the systemic drivers of homelessness, drug addiction, and mental health. I know you were all concerned about these issues as well, and that we need to get a formal, functional, and affordable plan by the end of the year, because we have a budget now, don't we? And not misappropriate funds as they have been before. If you want to see success in this challenging issue, please contact me, as I have a deep interest. I lost my son last year to mental illness and the lack of accessible resources. So let's fix this. There is a way, and I've found it.
Thank you. Cherry Hill, and after Cherry, Jess Johnson.
Department of Energy recently sent a letter to Mayor Brown trying to set our minds at ease that only a mere 2,000 gallons of radioactive waste would be trucked through our region. That's certainly warming news, and somehow magically, I don't know if it was the subsequent letter or the same letter, that ninety-eight percent of that radioactivity would magically be removed. I'm not a scientist, I don't know how that all works, and people that do, they don't say much. They haven't come to Spokane and tried to explain this to us, tried to explain it to the real estate agents that are trying to sell property here, that I don't know who wants to buy property on a route where you might have a nuclear mishap, or my insurance company, homeowners, who are probably salivating at the opportunity to raise my rates because I now live in a destruction zone. This is a bad deal for Spokane, and we need to be speaking up. Thank you.
Thank you, Cherry. Jess?
In regards to housing, I know there's supposed to be laws in place, Fair and Housing Act is supposed to prevent people from being discriminated against based on arrest history. I assure you that's not being enforced, it's, there'd be people being discriminated against all over the place. Black realty, good old Barbary, I can't run with anybody in this town, because the mayors keep having me arrested for complaining about police corruption. So with the arrest history, I can't find a place to live. I'm repeatedly putting in applications, and they just say, well, you're arrest history. No drugs, no violence, no nothing, but you can't find a place to live. So at some point, I'm gonna end up being in my car. There's no protection, so if, you know, if the landlords are gonna be protected, then the people need to be protected too, because the same landlords are out complaining about people living on the streets and the drug use, yet they don't want to be part of fixing the problem and allowing these people to live in their homes. I got an email today, I got denied criminal history. So if you're not gonna protect me from the cops and just throw me in jail, creating a criminal history, at least protect me from discrimination from landlords so I can find a damn place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Next, we will have John Alder, and then Will Hewings.
This particular issue maybe doesn't concern the city council itself, but I am on a public TV, and I'm hoping that both city, private and public sectors will talk about to fix it. We do need more public restrooms without codes to enter or having to buy an overpriced meal to use. This is not only concerning the homeless right here, there's many elderly folks like myself, they're finding incredibly hard to find a restroom to use. So again, I urge both private and public sectors, especially if you want this to be a friendly place for people to come down to, to find a way to have more public restrooms for people to use. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Will?
Good evening, my name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown Spokane. As a resident living just blocks from Spokane City Hall, I am beyond disgusted by what I see happening in my neighborhood. Mayor Lisa Brown and the Democrats have turned Spokane into a complete shithole. Outside my apartment, the streets are filled with crime and despair with homeless drug addicts, causing chaos and turning our city into a danger zone. Every day, I see people openly smoking fentanyl and meth on the sidewalks without a care in the world. If I owned a business like Mootsy's or the Satellite Grill, which are near where I live, I'd be furious at the total lack of action being taken to clean up this mess, the people doing drugs out in the open as I walk by with my children or my dog or my family. It's disgusting. I've lived downtown since 2019, and I've come here, and I speak about this, and now you guys are all concerned because businesses are talking about shutting down. Well, but what about people like myself that live down here? Why should I have to be exposed to people smoking drugs out in the open? Would you tolerate that in your neighborhood? Somebody smoking fentanyl on your porch? Probably not. That's what I gotta deal with. Then I gotta call Crime Check, then I get put on hold for fifteen minutes sometimes. It's ridiculous. Lisa Brown should be ashamed.
Thank you, Will. Next is Justin Holler, and after Justin, Larry Andrews.
Oh, joy, open forum time. Let's see, rapid succession. Justin Holler, District One. Why is it we give so much money away to homeless, never solving the problem? You guys could balance the budget like that by ending all funding, especially to NGOs where they are known embezzlers. Why would you give money to known embezzlers? I don't know. But the only thing I can think of is because you yourselves are of the criminal mindset. Accusing you just seems suspect, that criminals tend to hand, birds of a feather flock together. Next thought, why is it that no one from District One is representing the STA when District One has the biggest ridership of all the districts? It just doesn't make sense to me. Almost like the $200 million that you guys are gonna spend on projects shutting down one lane of division for bus traffic, particularly between the bridge and Foothills Boulevard, that's all District One. And these two can't even attend the board to say what goes on in their own district. How unfair is that? How many people are on the board, and you have the ability to change that, Betsy? You're in charge of that decision. That's all on you, because you appoint people, don't you not? So that's pretty horrible to see, because if it wasn't all about an agenda-driven reality, then maybe two people who represent District One, or at least one of them, could be on that decision-making process. Last but not least, I'm never for higher taxes or any new taxes. You guys wasted a plethora of money to begin with, and it's just a never-ending cesspool of money that you guys waste. Last, I guess, second to last. Also, we don't want fluoride in the water. We've lowered that down several times.
Larry Andrews, and then Jack Talcott, who will be joining by video.
Larry Andrews, citizen of Spokane and have a business here. I want to set the record straight about a yes vote for 2117. It will not stop the North-South Freeway. This was already financed by WSDO or Washington State funds that we paid thirteen cents for and we all voted for it. But we have a person from Spokane that was nominated mayor, from the mayor, Larry Luton, who in the paper says that a yes vote for 2117 will eliminate the North-South Freeway. Well, that's a lie. Andy Billick said the same thing. There's another lie. So that's wrong. That is tremendously wrong for these people, because they know the truth. The truth is, the money's already there, it has been there. And the thing that's really bothersome is, is if we don't pass 2117, we won't have a waste of energy plant here, okay? And it keeps seventy-seven people employed out there. It does a great service for this city, okay? And also, it's profitable, I believe. Profitable, unbelievable. And we want to get rid of it. We want to tax it, tax it and tax it so the low-income people have to pay more. I mean, this state taxed their gas four to $600 a year, and they're gonna give them $200 back. That's two to $300 loss for these families. And guess what? Four hundred companies in this state got million-dollar grants from all these low-income people feeding these large companies with this carbon tax. Larry Luton, we have a carbon tax already. It's the truth.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Jack Talcott?
He's gonna be online? Yeah. Go ahead, Jack, you're unmuted.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
We're gonna turn you up in the room a little bit, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I am Jack Talcott, longtime resident here in Spokane, and I want to thank you, council president, members of the council, and even the community that shows up, but no, I'm addressing the council. I'm here because we're all in this boat together, this life. We've got a lot of rules in our society, and there's a lot of issues that Spokane is not alone in facing. Economic disparity, housing shortages, these are widespread issues, as is the fact wars are still being paid for. And while there are wars here on earth, there is no freedom for any of us. And my experience here in Spokane has allowed me an interesting education, and I am a man of peace today, active with the local chapter of Veterans for Peace, and I am a man of deep faith. My deep faith and my goal for peace brought me here tonight to you, to invite you all to join us in the mission of bringing peace to our world. I believe if we can convince people with wealth and in positions of authority, I'd love to get in front of Congress before November and see if we can inspire and encourage them to do more for those innocent victims in the Middle East, in Ukraine, Sudan, and all over the world. Our world will be safer when secrets are no longer legal. And if we can agree that war is not necessary in our world, we can discuss ways to end them. And I am a man from Spokane, I think it would be pretty cool to bring a voice for the voiceless out of Spokane into Washington, D.C. And I'm trying to find support by ways of connections, maybe introductions is all I seek.
Thank you, Jack, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sunshine, and then Chris Wall, and then Johnny.
Sunshine from Spokane. So you guys keep saying that you're gonna help lessen the violence downtown and safety and all that. I want to say Kathcart and Bingo, thank you for quick responses on some things that included guns at stores this week. One of my things that I want to bring up publicly is, when I go in and I advocate for these stores, a lot of the times, these store clerks are in positions against these fentanyl users that become violent, where they have no choice but to pull the gun. Now, at one store that I got called in, their first line of defense is to pull the gun. The second store I got called into, he has lots of de-escalation skills before that, mace, et cetera, the girl sicced the dogs on him that were pit bulls, et cetera. So this one was a more violent attack, better de-escalation skills used, and more guns involved. There were four guns at that one. The other one, there were two guns, a gun drawn. Now, I think it's really important that we do something like a conference to help people learn these de-escalation skills so that the gun isn't drawn so quick. All these guns were legal, legal guns. So I think education is a huge part of this, and it does help us advocates when we go in there to have something as a backbone to refer to. Hey, the city said this, because it does work. And I'm not going in there and being like, hey, I'm Joe Schmo, and I think I know it all. And they're like, hey, we don't know if we can trust you. So I think that would help, and I think it would help with the de-escalation. Like I said, I got quick responses from you guys, and I thank you for that. So you are holding up to that, and I want people to know that. So I just really am thankful for everything that you guys are trying to do. You guys are in such a tough position.
Next is Chris Wall, Johnny, and then Earl Moore.
Hello, my name is Chris Wall. I've been homeless on and off for nineteen, going on twenty years. I've been signed and chartered as the Prophet and Overseer of One Family Love, OFL, since 2013. Mission Statement: A spiritual community dedicated to fostering a universal sense of family through love, harmony, and with nature in compassionate service to others. Our mission is to restore balance between human conduct and the natural world, uplift the needy through acts of kindness, and to create spaces where people can celebrate life and connect through shared experiences. We aim to empower individuals, especially those in need, to rediscover the inner potential, rebuild community bonds, and work together toward a sustainable future. Esteemed members of the city council, we stand at a pivotal moment for our city where the path forward can lead not only to revitalization but to a renewed sense of purpose for all of its residents. Imagine a city where every individual, regardless of the circumstances, is given the opportunity to contribute, to rebuild and be part of something greater than themselves. By uniting with the homeless population...
Which?
...population, integrating sustainable solutions and fostering community collaboration, we have a unique chance to transform not just the physical spaces but the very heart of the city. What if we turned the elected areas into vibrant, productive spaces? We could begin by introducing Norwegian composting toilets and gasifiers, creating sustainable systems that not only address sanitation and energy needs, but also empower people to learn valuable skills. These systems can be managed by those who have been on the margins, given them responsibility, pride, and purpose. Our city would be cleaner, more sustainable, and beacon of innovation. Picture perpetuating gardens, growing fresh food maintained by the very people once overlooked. These green spaces would nourish both body and spirit while plants could be used to purify the air, creating a healthier environment for everyone. These gardens combined with education and work opportunities would offer a path out of despair for many who struggle with homelessness, giving them the integral role in the city.
Chris, your two minutes is up. Thank you.
I was just about to address the homeless, or the fentanyl crisis.
Come again.
Yeah, or you can send us an email. We can submit it in the public record. Yeah.
Thank you. Johnny?
Johnny, if you're online, you can hit star three.
Earl Moore?
Earl Moore, District Three. Thank you, council, for listening again. I had no plans to speak tonight. I try to keep it to once a month, but I watched your meeting today and I was appalled. I have a question for you. Where are the housing? Where are you going to house the homeless when you close track? Could you please check with the administration? Where is the transparency that was so spoken about with this trifecta? I haven't seen it. I watched the legislative briefing today. The emergency ordinance that you voted on, really? Point of order on Councilman Bingle for speaking too loud? And then you asking, did anyone check with the administration on what we're doing here? You're accountable to us, not the administration. And calling the question because I believe you are not in agreement or you're tired of listening, so you call a question so you can vote. It's all shameful. Every one of you that are sitting here, you know who you are. Also, I just heard tonight you met with your constituents and they want you to do something. I listened today. They had seven letters from district leaders. Didn't matter to anybody here. These are things that, oh, they just concern me. I want to thank Councilman Bingle and Cathcart for standing against this lopsided council. Five-two, five-two, five-two. It's, I have served on numerous boards in many years of my life and I have never in my life seen such bias as I'm seeing here. I tell you, our city needs prayer. Every one of us here needs prayer. We need to pray. I do every day. Do you? That's the answer. That's our solution. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our open forum this evening. I will entertain a motion for dismissal, adjournment?
I'm so moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second for adjourned. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or no's?
No.
No. This means adjourn. But Councilmember Bingle, you can hang around if you like.
You know I will.